Good night, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 9 Oshkosh Council Meeting. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Mugrower.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
All present.
Our councilmember Wojciechowski will lead us in the invocation, and then the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Lakeside and Jefferson Elementary school students.
Thank you. We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do the things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
Kids, come on up. You ready?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, are you nervous?
Okay, no. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have some certificates for you this evening. Taylor, there you go, and Phoenix, and Adriana. Thank you so much for leading us in the pledge tonight. Do you have anything you want to say?
Good evening.
Thank you.
Mom, was it worth the drive across town?
All right, and right off the bat, we have a public hearing this evening, 22454, approved final resolution for partial right-of-way vacation for a portion of East 9th Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Do we have anyone registered to speak on this item?
We do not.
We do not. All right, and because this is a public hearing, I'll read it a second time. Resolution 22454, approved final resolution for partial right-of-way vacation for a portion of East 9th Avenue. Anyone wishes to address this item? And the third and final reading, approved final resolution for a partial right-of-way vacation for a portion of East 9th Avenue. Right, council will take a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on this item? All right, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we move on to citizen statements to council. These are for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anyone registered for citizen statements?
We do. Deb Martin.
Yes. And we are limited to five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for serving our city in this way. I know it takes, I don't even know how much time it probably takes. But my question to you is, how many of you have ridden the Oshkosh Go Transit bus? I am urging you to please do that before February 4th in 2023, because that's Transit Equity Day, and we'll be asking to have some events and some acknowledgement of that coming on February 4th. So my challenge to you is to ride the city bus an hour or two hours sometime before February 4th, and maybe talk with others about what the experience was like for you. I've done it once, and I plan to do it before then as well, so I can report back that I have ridden again. The other thing I have is I'm right now on the advisory board for the Parks Department, and I'm urging that you do fund all the things that are in there. It's ambitious, but there's many, many things, and I think Ray and his group do a great job of organizing what's most important. But my question to the city manager would be, there's $125,000 that's also from the parks. That is, it's still a line item, but there's no, it's not in the funding, actually. It was something we added because we were asking the people in the parks to look around our community, especially in the large populated areas, are there places where there could be some green space? There's many children, there's many, many people just to walk around. So we didn't have anything particular that it should be this space, but that the money would be allowed in the budget so that if something was determined, it could be done, at least on a small scale, for some of our more populated areas. Can I ask that as a question, or?
It's actually item 29 on the agenda this evening.
Okay, so I'll have to wait on that one. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else registered?
We do not.
All right, we'll move on to consent agenda. And let's see here, do we have anyone registered for consent agenda items?
We do not.
All right, we'll take a motion in a second, council.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on consent items? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one. If Chief Smith wouldn't mind coming up, it's Resolution 22458, number 10 on our agenda this evening, the approval of purchasing and installation of automatic license plate readers for $124,000 for 23 to 24. We had a brief discussion ourselves last week. At the initial, initial hearing of this, I wasn't a huge fan. You shared some good information as to the need, the why, and why would we want to do this? Would you mind telling, telling all of us and telling the people at home why we want to do this? Why is this a good thing for the city of Oshkosh?
Well, this, these, the ALPRs are basically force multipliers for us. They allow us to really gather license plates of vehicles that are traveling on a public highway. And if we, in the instance that we have a partial license plate of a suspect vehicle of a crime, we're able to use technology to search that data, get a picture of the vehicle, potentially get the full license plate, and actually find the suspects. There's currently 51 localities in the state of Wisconsin that have these cameras at this time. There's another 50 that have MOUs to share data. And as an example, Cadillac converter thefts. We know that those are running rampant across the city and across the state. If we were able to get a partial tag from somebody's Ring camera, we would be able to search to see whose vehicle it was that was being used to steal these Cadillac converters. Really a story to share with you that I just received that occurred on October 15th in Beaver Dam. There was a young lady got run over by a, run over by a hit-and-run vehicle in the parking lot of a Walmart. They were able to get a partial tag, and through the flock system, they were actually able to find the suspect who ran over this young lady and fled the scene, almost killed her.
Appreciate the extra info, Chief. No, at the initial outset, was a little hesitant myself. It sounded a little invasive, a little intrusive, you know, a bit. But in terms of law enforcement and being able to help, you know, locate, you know, missing individuals as well as, you know, suspect vehicles, it seems like the right thing to do.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a follow-up question. So similar to some of the discussions we have previously about like storage for some of the body-worn cameras and that, I guess the question would be, this is talking about a trial period at no cost, but then after the trial, one-year cost at $65,000, second year $58,000. Does that include storage capacity for the capturing of those images?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, questions? Other items on consent? All right, please call the roll on consent.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, we'll move on to new ordinances. We have two new ordinances this evening. They will not be voted on, but we'll come back to council at the next meeting. The first one is 22470, approved zone change from single-family residential, SR9, to urban mixed-use for vacant property located on the south side of the 1900 block of Columbia Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Any discussion on the proposed ordinance? And ordinance 22471, approved zone change from central mixed-use district with a planned development overlay to two-flat residential district for property located at 14 West 11th. Again, Plan Commission recommends approval. Any discussion on this item? All right, we will move to pending ordinances. The first one is 22472, removing 15-minute parking on the west side of Oregon Street from 91 feet north of 16th Avenue to 19 feet north of 16th Avenue between 5:00 AM and 6:00 PM. Is there anyone registered on this?
No, there's not.
All right, council. Motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion on removing the 15-minute parking on the west side of Oregon? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
And 22473, approved zone change from institutional district to institutional district with a planned development overlay for property located at 375 North Eagle Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Is there anyone registered?
No, there's not.
Council, motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on 375 North Eagle Zone Change. Please call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
22474, approved intermediate attachment of properties from Town of Algoma effective March 1st, 2023, per approved cooperative plan Zone C, generally located east of Clairville Road, south of Witsel Avenue, and north of State Road 91. Is there anyone registered on this item? Council, motion in a second, please.
So moved. So I'll second.
Discussion. Is Mark Lyons, oh, no, okay. Ms. Nyphorth, just, I guess, just kind of generally question regarding the attachment. What does this mean for folks who live in this area?
Sure. This is part of a 2004 boundary agreement that we have with the Town of Algoma. So this is a scheduled attachment. So those properties that are in the attachment area that will be coming into the city in March of 2023, there's about 82 parcels. We will be working with them to analyze the city utilities that they may have or may not have, and then work with Public Works as far as, you know, future CIP projects. But as of right now, if there's nothing in the plans, they would keep using, if they're on a well or if they're on a mound system or whatever it may be.
And we do have a neighborhood meeting scheduled with those folks, right?
We let them know that it was, the process was starting, so they all received a letter. But as far as a specific neighborhood meeting, just with the amount of parcels, we don't have a neighborhood meeting set up, but we'll continue to work with them.
Individually?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, please call the roll on 22474.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, we have a number of new resolutions. The first one being 22475, approve general development plan and specific implementation plan for improvements to the West High School athletic field at 375 North Eagle Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Anyone registered?
No.
All right, back to council.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Please call the roll on 22475.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, Resolution 22476, adopt a 2023 annual operating budget and establish the property tax levy for the city of Oshkosh. Is there anyone here to speak on the budget? All right, back to council.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Ford.
I ain't got a spiel, I figured I would, right?
I knew you would.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm definitely happy to vote, to vote yes on this budget. Anybody that watched the last two meetings know that I have issues with it. Voted against every levy-supported budget enhancement during the hearing process, because I really think that the process was a bit flawed, and I think flawed processes tend to end in flawed outcomes. I think we needed to have a deeper conversation about reprioritization for our benefit and for the benefit of the community, and that didn't happen. And really, the external economic conditions, I think, demanded that we have a show of austerity here. Now, I managed to convince exactly zero of my colleagues of the wisdom of my position, so message, message received. And I get it, right? It's not, it's not fun to vote against city needs, police, museum, sustainability, DI. That's not fun. But I truly do believe in democratic governance and that we're stronger as a group, and that we need to get behind positions once the group makes a decision. So I'm very happy to do that, because we have a very effective group here. I do hope that we do things a little bit differently next year with the enhancements. There's certainly been times over the past two and a half years or since I've been here where I voted against something that I personally believed in because I was worried about getting too deep into the realm of operations, because that's really not the place that we're supposed to be. So was happy to vote against something, even if it violated my personal beliefs. But I think this needs to be a two-way street. And the enhancement process, for those of you who didn't watch it, department heads come directly to us and ask for operational support. They don't work for us. We only have one employee, and it's the city manager here. That process never quite felt right the last two years. This year, with the sheer number of enhancements, that really, really showed me that it is, it is a problem. So I think if we open the door to this body making operational decisions, and that's clearly what that process is, we risk going down a problematic road. I don't want us to have a less effective group than us, less responsible group than us, that starts making their own cuts in the budget and going through line by line, things that maybe we don't understand. But when we open the door for us getting involved in operations, that's, that's the path we're going down. I do want to end on a positive note here, though, that I'm so appreciative of city staff for recommending that we decouple the utility-funded enhancements from the operations budget process, and that we consider them. At the same time, we look at the utility fees that will pay for those positions. I think that's a huge victory for transparency, and really happy that happened. And also just want to thank city staff in general for making, you know, doing all the work to get us to this point. The budget process is the most important thing we do. It's not easy. It's all about making difficult decisions that nobody wants to make, and it doesn't happen without the work of city staff. So very much appreciate that. So with that, I'll shut up now until next year.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to acknowledge Councilmember Ford. He took an unpopular position last week, and I've done it before myself. It's not fun, but the job isn't about fun. It's about doing what we think is right. And I have a lot of respect for the position you held and the position you took that, took last meeting and sticking to your guns on it and telling people why. That's the big reason. If we vote no, you got to tell people why, so that they have an understanding and so that they have a better chance of coming back next time and trying to get a yes from us. So a lot of respect for that. To city staff, thank you for the document you prepared for us. A lot of work goes into it. I think I've said it every five years I've been up here. No budget's perfect, ever. We all want, we'd all like to see more in areas and less in certain areas, but in the end, it's how we govern. It's how we move forward over the next fiscal year. It's, this is about moving Oshkosh forward. It's how do we achieve our strategic goals? How do we continue to maintain our infrastructure and hopefully improve? You know, how do we, how do we get people to save parks? And, you know, how do we have clean drinking water and being able to fund the things that we think are important in this community? And so I'm thankful for the process that has gotten us here. And just want to show my appreciation for, for staff for that. I do have an amendment I'll make, but I want to give council, other council members a chance to speak before, before I do that. So I'll send it back.
And I'm going to have Councilmember Miller and Councilmember Wojciechowski go next, but I apologize for overlooking Ms. Martin, who was here earlier on this item. I should have brought her up before. And so after the two councilmembers speak, I'll have Ms. Martin come up.
I think she was on the.
She's the next. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I am, I am on time. All right, my apologies. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to echo a few of Matt's comments, as well as show my wholehearted support towards Mike's position. I feel like I betrayed him a little bit, so my apologies there. But the reason I undermined you, Mike, was I felt these positions were necessary for this year. I truly did, and I delved into it. But I agree, the process was messy. We need to clean that up, just for everybody here and everybody at home. I'm very satisfied with the budget. Not so much the process, but, but, but I guess in the end, we got where the community needs and where we needed to be. So again, thanks to staff, everybody out there. Appreciate all the hard work.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, what everyone else said, you know, the truth is, we face difficult choices. And, you know, as the state reduces its share of revenue to local communities, it's just going to get harder for us. So, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't bring that up, because it is, it is troubling. You know, I'll be supporting the budget, and I appreciate, you know, everyone who was a part of this process and the differing discussions that we had about, you know, especially these budget amendments. You know, I'd be remiss if I didn't say I was disappointed in the lack of prioritization or investment in the areas of sustainability and diversity, equity, and inclusion. You know, a budget is a reflection of our priorities. So I just hope going forward that we put some more emphasis on these areas. You know, they're growing concerns, not just in Oshkosh, but everywhere else. And I hope that, you know, we're not missing out in these areas while other communities are, you know, making that prioritization. So just hoping going forward that we can, you know, kind of put our money where our mouth is in the future when it comes to these topics. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. And what I, what I'd like to say is that in the past, I believe councils have been tolerant of this somewhat awkward process of having enhancements added on, because in the past, at least in my six years so far, that there have been fewer number of enhancement requests, you know, like two or three. And there's been like a certain amount of funding that could be used that was, you know, some either-or decision-making based on some funding that had room for that. And so this is the first year that I recall seeing where we had, I believe it was 14 requests. And so that made it somewhat over, not just overwhelming, but the need was so much greater. So I would just say that this year was somewhat different, and perhaps, you know, that does send a message to look at things in a different way for, for process next year. Would also agree with Councilmember Ford about the prioritization piece of it coming in beforehand rather than after the fact. So I will be supporting this operating budget, but certainly, this was a somewhat different year than others, given the number of enhancements and not really a set aside based on what we had agreed to on the 4.19%. That's all I have. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure nobody else wants to, okay. A few months ago, council gave direction to city staff to try to keep the levy increase around 4%. And that 4% gets eaten up pretty fast by very valuable things, and it's our people, straight up. That 4% is its, its health insurance, its benefits, its the cost of doing business and paying our people a fair and good wage to do the work on behalf of the city. We added a few amendments last, last meeting. I pushed that number from, from a 4.19% increase up to a 4.54. And in an effort to try to hold that line, to be, to be responsible, to work within our policies, we've got some fund balance available. I'd move for approval of enhancement 20, and that's using $153,600 of fund balance to reduce the 23 debt levy, thereby holding our, our, holding the line at 4.19%.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor.
The reason for that number, it also works well. I just want to give a little bit further clarification. Our current policies that this council has adopted says we should have a fund balance, a general fund balance of anywhere from 16 to 30% of our, our next year's operating budget. We are still over that 30%. We have, basically, we have cash on hand that we can use to pay down the debt a bit further. It's a responsible thing to do, and it's one way to hold, hold the line on that levy. And that's, that's the reason for that number, and that's the reason for, for using that as a, as a appropriate fund source. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, thank you, Matt, for the creativity on that. And yeah, fully supportive of that. It's in line with the policies of the Long Range Finance Committee created for our fund balance. And though it's nice to be able to use that fund balance to purchase tangible things by paying off a portion of our debt, just like, right, your mortgage. You pay down your mortgage, it means you're paying less, less in interest. So that's, that's a good thing for the city. So happy to support it, because it's totally appropriate.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. While I wholeheartedly agree with this, I think, Russ, if you want to chime in here at all for the people at home and kind of explain in layman's terms what we're doing here. I mean, simple terms, I think we're paying down, prepaying a credit card, but you can probably do a little better job than, than I can.
When we went through the budget workshops, and we talked about fund balance, and actually, as part of the process, I'm required to give you a position statement of our general fund, fund balance before you make considerations for the upcoming budget. For the folks at home, Jake, I have a slide. If you could just grab and put that on the screen, I think it would be helpful for folks to understand when revenues exceed budget numbers and expenditures are less than anticipated, we have added to our fund balance the last couple of years, basically, starting in 2017. You can see that the increase, let me see if I can make that a little bit bigger. I might need some help on that. Hold on one second. Move this down just a little bit. So as we anticipate the ending of 2022 with our operations based on projections of revenue and expenditures, we should be at $18,290,000, which is about 36% of our next year's expenditures. Long-range finance and the city council has adopted a policy that we want to stay between 16 and 30%, so we have some additional money. As part of the process, initially, we talked about different amounts of fund balance to be used for debt that was issued in 2022 for 2023 capital projects. We started out with a recommendation at $2 million. This would bump it up to $2,153,000. It would bring this pretty much down a little bit closer to our, our maximum. We still have a little bit more cushion there available. But the, the big question is, you know, what's the comfort level with council, with other expenditures coming up and those type of things? So we definitely have the money to do that. I do not have any issues with the enhancement number 20, which would pay down more of our debt levy with fund balance, and I think that makes some sense.[1763.11]
And if I could just provide, just added depth to that discussion, Mr. Van Gompel and I go through a lot of discussions as we're trying to make final decisions on the budget, and when we originally recommended the $2 million, there was a range that we both were creating, and we debate amongst ourselves, and this is still within that margin of error that we were talking about. I chose to go the lower end, but about 2.3 was our high end, I mean, when we were talking about that. So you've actually mediated a debate that Russ and I were having behind the scenes, because Russ was at 2.3, I was at 2, and this is landing at $2,153,000. So you're slightly siding with Russ, but only by $3,000. So honestly, we can do that. I didn't want to go too much farther, because I don't want to, you know, create the possibility that we have to use more levy next year, and I didn't want to set ourselves up for that. And there is a little bit of a projecting that we're doing, but we're within the margin of error that we had established amongst ourselves, and so I can certainly go with this, but, you know, I don't want to push that envelope too far.
As you're talking to seven of your bosses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I'd just be remiss, too, if I didn't give a shout out to the finance director and the work of the Long Range Finance Committee and the councils that came before I got here, but just looking at the numbers here, us paying off more debt, I mean, this is one of the real positive financial stories for the city of Oshkosh. We were at, you know, the state limits the amount of debt we're allowed to take off, general obligation debt. In 2014, we were at 78.6%, which is really on the high end in the state, and certainly for cities of our size. 2020, we were at 50.8%, and that's a remarkable reduction, and it puts us right there in the middle with our peers. So it's always good when we have money to pay off debt. It's really a dividend that we get from being responsible. It's appreciated. So thank you, guys.
Any other comments on number 28, 22476, adoption of the annual operating budget and establishing the property tax levy? Seeing none, please call the roll.
You have an amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is.
Amendment 20.
Amendment 20.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So while you're voting on the amendment, as it impacts the resolution that was in your packet, if you can just vote on the amendment, and we'll have a substitute resolution for you to consider if the amendment is successful.
Okay. All right, we have the motion and the second on the amendment for item number 20, and we will call the roll on the amendment.
Just for clarity, if I could read the motion, to approve the enhancement to use fund balance of $153,600 to reduce the levy increase to 4.19%.
Sounds right.
Okay.
Russ, you good with those numbers? Just real quick math?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Hansen.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried 7. All right, and back to the resolution.
So Madam Mayor, Mr. Fitzpatrick is making a copy of three documents. One will be the budget enhancements, which is basically the same one in your packet, but I had a couple of different options laid out, because I didn't know exactly where council was going to land. I also have a revised levy summary for year information, just so you have that, with a substitute resolution. It's the same wording, but I'll point out the differences once we get the copy back from Mr. Fitzpatrick, so if you take just a quick two minutes.
Just a, I guess, point of procedure on that, then. Since we're replacing the resolution, is that.
I'm hearing this as you are, so I'm going to let him explain what he's doing.
Sure.
Is that public, how is that publicly noticed?
The amendment changed the resolution. Well, what was noticed was what was in the original budget four and a half weeks ago. So.
If I may, go to your resolution in your packet right now, resolution 22-.
476.
476. And the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, whereas, us actually had creates a levy.
There's only four.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
The whereas, not the numbers.
There you go.
If you look at that, it reads, whereas it is necessary to levy a property tax in the amount of $45,833,800. That number will be changing based on your last vote. Also on.
And specifically, just so you can refer to on page, oh, let's see, page 289 of your budget, of your agenda packet, the budget amendments, because enhancement number 20, amendment number 20 was approved, your levy is now $45,730,200, and that's what Mr. Fitzpatrick is preparing to have. So you have it in print as opposed to scratching it out and rewriting it. I'll repeat it, $45,730,200. So you're going to get that.
Well, yeah.
I'm squinting my eyes a little bit, so I.
We couldn't have sent somebody smarter than Fitzy to do this?
It's just a copier.
Well, I guess, my question is about.
He already did.
The public notice of a different document here.
Go ahead, Ford.
Yeah, look, I think what it, all it is, is it's an amendment, but they have it prepared for us.
Right. It just changes the math.
There's one attachment that changes, but then I'd like to just point out on the resolution itself, there is another change in item number 3 on the now therefore be resolved, because there you do the tax levy for each of the various funds. The only one that changes will be the debt service fund, and I don't have that number in front of me. I'll have it as soon as I get the next one here, but it's basically the difference of the $153,600.
And is that in the resolution?
Yes.
Oh, it is in the resolution.
Let's highlight it, but I don't think we have a colored printer up here. So you probably won't see it highlighted when you get it.
Russ, since we have time, it's Fitz unplugs and replugs in the cover. To try to make, that's how I fix things at my house. Just so the public understands, the reason that this reduces the tax levy is not just us randomly throwing money at a problem, it's because we are paying off debt, which means we have to levy less for our debt service, correct?
Correct. We're using fund balance to reduce the debt service levy, as the motion indicated.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody back there want to go check on Fitz?
Nobody can get back there.
The number on the second page, we'll read when it comes out, will be $13,277,100. So that's the number you'll see when we get up here.
Fitzy, we were badmouthing, well, I was badmouthing you.
So was I.
Yeah.
So the city manager's handing out the revision. What's your number?
Should be 13,533.
Oh, $13,277,100. Oh, okay.
Your calculator's as good as mine.
Yeah, there we go.
So.
Are we, before we do this, are we positive on that number?
I am positive on the number.
Okay, all right, then I'm good.
That's why I had, like I said, I had this all set to go. It just took a while to get you. Now legally, I think Lynn's going to have a suggestion.
They're going to be a little.
Yeah, I have a suggestion.
This is for Jesse.
All right. Okay.
It's the staple list.
Give me just one thing.
It's the stability, so they're going to use the paper. So if I may, real quick, just for everybody at home, what I handed out was the same budget amendment that you saw previously, and it has item number 20 on there, just to kind of highlight that. Page 2 says the tax levy summary, and the general fund number stays the same, but the debt service number is reduced to $13,277,100, which also shows what the impact will be on the tax rate. And what I handed out for council is 22-476-1A, option 1A. This is what I picked, and it has a new, whereas it's necessary to levy a property tax in the amount of $45,730,200. And the now therefore be resolved clause changes the debt service levy to $13,277,100. It all adds.
Matt, I think that matches your number.
Yep.
Councilmember Ford.
So I don't know how the clerk wants to refer to this in the minutes or.
We're going to give you a motion in just a second here. She's almost got her.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, I think we're going to just call a quick little recess here and go to break while some of the mechanics are worked out here.
Break.
Just a five-minute recess.
I think that works.
This local government meeting is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV.
See if this, if anybody wants to make and second this. Amendment to change the levy to $45,730,200 and amend debt service fund amount in paragraph 2 to $13,277,100 and adopt the attachment presented to council at the meeting.
So moved.
Well, is.
Second amendment.
Is that 14?
Wait, excuse me. We have it moved and seconded by.
A second.
Erickson. Okay.
Now discussion.
Go ahead, Councilmember Miller.
Sorry, Mayor. My apologies to everybody. What, Jesse, what was that number? I'm sorry, the number just didn't.
Which number? The levy?
The 14, 7. We all, we all good with that?
That's the, yes.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure staff is okay. All right, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Is that jiving for everything? All right, so any further discussion on the amendment? All right, call the roll, please. Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Hansen.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried 7. So now we are back to the full resolution.
So this is now as amended, or did they have to redo it?
No, they don't have to redo it, just.
As amended.
Any more discussion, or.
Do we have any further discussion on the resolution? All right, please call the roll. Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Hansen.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried 7. All right, we are at item 29, resolution 22-477. I'm going to invite Ms. Martin back up to the podium regarding her question and comments on the approval of 2023 capital improvements plan and financing for the 2023 capital improvement projects.
My question was that $125,000 in the Parks Department request.
Yes.
But I didn't.
Happy to answer that at this.
Thank you.
The Parks Advisory Board submitted 10 priority projects, and the Parks, this, the project that Ms., pardon, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin referred to, was the 10th of 10 recommended projects, so it was the lowest priority. It is rare, if I, if ever, that I recommend all of them, and there was a discussion about prioritization. I had to prioritize the Parks projects, and there is funding for this project in the year 2025, so I felt, given the fact that it's already in the budget in the CIP, that this would be unfunded. Now, with that said, and the mayor and I, because I know the mayor is very passionate about this one as well, you know, should we find, you know, some, a site that might meet that criteria? There's a couple of options. The council could go back and find a funding source, but the council gave me a strict number on borrowing, and we held to that. One of the other ideas is that the Great Neighborhoods Fund is available. I do not approve Great Neighborhoods Funds. Those actually get proposed by neighborhood associations and brought to council. And I know that a couple of the projects that I also did not fund in the CIP are also, I know some of the neighborhood associations are going to come back to council with a request, and it'll go through Ms. Nyforth and the Community Development Department. So that's one option. And then the other option is, is we can find an alternate funding source should we have some savings, but it's not unusual. The last couple of years, we've identified projects, because we want to keep them on the list. One of the other advantages of keeping them on the list is that should grant funding become available or something like that, it would be in the CIP, and so it would be available if we wanted to pursue grant funds or something like that. So there's some other options available, and should we find an ideal site, I certainly would endeavor to get that done, so.
Well, thank you for approving the other nine, so thank.
No, no, it was about, it was about six.
I mean, for, oh, you approved six?
Oh, yeah, there were only six.
Ah, anyway, okay. Thanks for your explanation, I appreciate it.
No, you're welcome.
Well, and if I may, also, I think that, so, and in further explanation, because I'm the council liaison for Parks Advisory Board, what the spirit and intent of the Parks Advisory Board unanimous vote to move that from 2025 to 2023 was for the purpose of reprioritizing, because it is a need in the central city historic, historic need base of the comprehensive outdoor rec plan, and that's been known for some time. So the decision city manager made on the prioritization over that of the Parks Advisory Board, that is, I think, what Ms. Martin is speaking to, that this is a central city land acquisition, acquisition need, and there were newer park requests that were placed in that priority. So I know that sounds a little bit convoluted, but I just wanted to clarify what the intent and spirit, from my understanding from the, again, unanimous vote of the Parks Advisory Board, to move that up in the priority.
My understanding was number 10.
Do we need a motion to approve the CIP?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, further discussion. Please call the roll. Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Hansen.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried 7. All right, we are now at item number 30, resolution 22478, appropriate ARPA funds for 2023 specific infrastructure projects.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on ARPA fund projects. Councilmember Ford.
I think, Russ, this is for you. I put you on the spot, I didn't ask you this, but just, can you share with the public how these projects would have been funded if we did not use our ARPA funds?
Yeah, there was a couple of different categories in the chart in your packet. Let's see if I can get to it real quick. Let me just cover it. Most of the projects were initially slated to be funded through the capital improvement planning process that you just adopted, but based on the financing of projects for debt, cash, and those type of things, we were trying to allocate the potential use of ARPA projects for a number of those projects. In addition, when we initially started looking at our operating budget, in the budget you just approved, we did a levy of about $1 million and $88,000 in capital projects that started out closer to $1,400,000, and we took some of those that would have been normally funded through the operational purpose and recommended that those be funded through ARPA. So it was basically a combination of two things. We have the ARPA funding that we got from the federal government in 2021, and we have, 22, excuse me, 2022. We have until 2024 to spend. and we have, or twenty-two, excuse me, 2022. We have until 2024 to spend. With the appropriations tonight, at the, after that's done, if that's successful, we'll have about seven million dollars of ARPA projects, or potential funding, available for infrastructure projects based on the resolution that council adopted.
Awesome. Thank you.
So, Russ, we're basically giving the taxpayer their monies back. I mean...
Well, what we do, we have, as we talked about in our budget workshops, we have a lot of pent-up demand for capital projects, and we've done that and tried to manage that by postponing some projects and also looking at some projects to be funded by the, now the availability of some of these ARPA funds. So the recommendation to councils, there's a whole long list that's included and will be attached to the resolution, but this will actually give the appropriation to allow those funds to be used.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to piggyback on that, just briefly, you know, this starts with going back to when we, we approved the plan, where Councilmember Ford had put forth a plan that the council bought into, that, that we allocate seventy-five percent to infrastructure needs and basically the needs of the city, leaving another twenty-five to the social, social causes and social work that we could potentially do. And after this nearly four million dollars that we're going to use of those ARPA funds, it'll still leave us a little over seven million, as Finance Director Van Gompel mentioned, but that four million dollars, that would have been, you know, to try to achieve those things, it would have been debt, it would have been levy, or it would have been cash. And, and given how the budget played out this year, that's four million dollars worth of projects that do not get done. That's additional internet infrastructure, that's a fire department receives funding, police department receives funding, Parks Department, museum, Grand Opera House, just to name a few. So it's, it's a great use of, of four million dollars of ARPA money to make sure that, that we're meeting the demands of, of the needs of our citizens, and, and I'm more than happy to use these funds for that purpose. So I'll, I'll be supporting.
I'd like to introduce an amendment to add to the 2023 projects for consideration. The eighty thousand dollars from the library request for material acquisitions, given that we do have a significant remaining balance, and also, well, I'll wait because I have a second one. In addition to that, I would like to hear the appetite of council about including eighty thousand dollars in here for the library acquisitions that was removed from enhancements.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Ford.
So my understanding was that the initial request would have been on the levy? So I guess my, my question for city staff, is this an ongoing expense, or would this be a one-time expenditure?
This is, this is an ongoing expense because their materials budget is about two hundred some odd thousand. I can't remember the exact amount, and they were originally going to be in the three hundred thousand range.
And my, I should clarify, my request is to add that as a one-time for the 2023 time period, to give an adjustment period for the library to reflect on what may come after that, but it would be for this specific 2023 distribution of ARPA funds. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'll be opposed to that. I don't think it's any surprise that I would like some more transparency there. One thing I'm a little frustrated with is I believe they received, and, Russ, you can help me out, they received an additional two hundred thousand dollars from, from the county this year for this, and for us to add this to the levy, I think would be frivolous. Is, is that right, that from the town of Algoma, but the numbers went up, and I think the, the library received an extra two hundred thousand dollars that we were unaware of? Is that number close or accurate?
It's not that we weren't aware of it, but it's over from twenty-one to twenty-three. It's been a two hundred thousand dollar increase in county aid.
So, okay. So they've, they've received an additional two hundred thousand dollars. So I, I would be very much opposed to adding eighty-three thousand dollars to the levy when they've received that additional funding.
This is ARPA, not the levy.
So...
For a one-time request. Councilmember Ford.
Will I go back to that? Can, can city staff, in here, is, I'm looking at the original resolution here, and I apologize, I didn't know this was coming, clearly, from my lack of preparation here. I mean, is it, is it an operating expense? I just, I'm looking at the resolution we passed, and I want to make sure that, to set our ARPA spending policies. And one of our, you know, our top one was no ARPA fund should be used to create new programs with ongoing expenses for the city. So I just need to understand if this is in compliance with our policy or not.
This is an operating expense. It's the line item, excuse me, for a moment. Yeah, it's, it's called, in here, it's called specialty supply. So, yeah, it's, it would be an operating expense.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Well, I mean, in that case, I'm, I'm not going to vote against the policy that we, we passed for the distribution of ARPA funds. I think that, that'll put in jeopardy the responsible thing that I think we did. I mean, if, if people want to come back, if we have a way to, to assure that this is in compliance with our, with our ARPA policy, be happy to reconsider it at some point. But as it stands right now, if I'm being told it's an operating expense, I can't support it.
All right. If there's no further discussion, please call the roll on the amendment request.
Just to clarify, it's to add eighty thousand dollars for library acquisitions as a one-time adjustment for the...
No, I'm sorry. Library materials for a one-time expense.
Library material acquisition?
Yes.
I apologize. Thank you. Okay, so add eighty thousand dollars for library material acquisitions as a one-time adjustment for the 2023 ARPA funds?
Yes. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, sorry, I just, I don't mean to belabor the point, but we're obviously getting conflicting messages here. Is it a one-time expenditure, or is it not a one-time expenditure?
I made the request, I made the motion for an amendment for a one-time expense of that for acquisition. Staff indicated the original enhancement request was for ongoing. So this was me suggesting a one-time versus an ongoing for this ARPA allocation.
Okay. I, I request, is there someone from the library here that could speak to this, so we can understand how this would actually work?
It's a matter of semantics. It's, it's, it's historically been an operating budget. The mayor's saying, take it out of ARPA, so it would come out of the ARPA fund, not the library operating fund this year. But it has historically been in their operating budget. So I'm trying to reconcile the two statements, but my understanding is that it would come out of this fund, and this is a specific fund that the Finance Director created. If I may, to try to clarify, Jay, could you please put up on the screen from my laptop the projects for consideration that's part of the resolution right now? And now, this is, I can't make it, I can make it larger, but you wouldn't be able to see the entire page. But the, the reason I wanted this to be shown is the projects that are included in the list, in this list are pretty much one-time things that are being acquired for a longer life than a, a typical current asset. And one of the other parts of the resolution was actually funding for a library, generator in the library. We made that decision earlier, and we are adjusting the 2022 ARPA allocations to include funding for a library generator. So in the resolution presented before you, that's why that additional language is, is shown. So the, the projects that I picked for your consideration were projects that have a fairly significant life and were not what I would call more, even though books are not more than one year, they're really kind of a current asset in that their useful life is relatively short shelf life. And so that's why, from a financial perspective, I think, I, I understand the intent, and it is a legislative intent, but, you know, based on the policy the council adopted, you wanted items that were in the capital improvement plan or that were going to be capital acquisitions, and I don't think that this request, request fits that definition, in my opinion. But that's a legislative decision.
Deputy Mayor, and then Councilmember Miller, and then Ford.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Briefly, one, Councilmember Ford's right. This goes against the, the established policy we have. I won't, I won't deviate from that while I want to support additional funding. There, I have, I have plenty of questions that, that cannot be answered, I suspect. And I guess I do have a question. Was the library director consulted regarding this? Because if he had been, I'm sure he would be here tonight and, and have a presence to be able to talk to us. And I feel he's probably going to not be extremely excited to find out that, that we're going to have questions that he's not here to answer, and that's not appropriate. That staff is given the appropriate heads up, that they're, have the ability to be here to speak to us on topics that especially impact their budget. So I'm, I'm gravely concerned about that. But if we want to get real technical, so the, the motion was for eighty thousand, is that correct, City Clerk?
That's my understanding.
Thank you. The actual amount that they were actually requesting was eighty-one eight. So I'm just trying to make sure that, I'm wondering where all this is coming from at the last moment. So those are my thoughts. I don't need any responses, though.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. So has this been vetted through the normal ARPA request? I mean...
No, this was part of the operating budget request.
Okay. So I, I guess I wish I would have known a little bit more about this, and I have got a lot of questions also. So I'll be, just because of the pure confusion on this, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
Never mind.
Okay. Well, as Mr. Van Gompel indicated, you know, these items that were selected by staff do relate to shelf life, and as books tend to be on shelves, no pun intended, and they do last for quite some time, most of them, even in heavy circulation. It would appear that there's not an appetite for that, but I will ask that it be roll called on the vote.
Wojciechowski?
No.
Erickson?
No.
Ford?
No.
Mugrower?
No.
Hanson?
No.
Miller?
No.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Fails.
And before coming back to the original item, I'm also going to introduce an amendment request, a motion to amend regarding something that is in the CIP and does match our policy, and that is regarding the one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that Ms. Martin spoke to earlier, to bring that into 2023, as the Parks Advisory Board did vote and support, and this could potentially be a funding source. It is a long-term asset, of course, if that acquisition was made. But it's my understanding that the reference to if something is found only comes up if there's funding available. So we get into this kind of endless loop of, well, there's not money, oh, well, where there's not land. And so it's important that we...
Do you want to have a second before you, since you have a motion on the floor to, before you defend it?
What I'm asking for is a motion to amend this to add a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for central city land acquisition for a park. Do I have a second? Dies for lack of a second. All right. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, I'm just a little confused. Deb was talking about green space, and, and I, I don't want to belay the point, but I'm just, I'm confused what the hundred and twenty-five thousand is for. So I thought she was asking for green space, and you're asking for, to purchase a property?
What Ms. Martin was referring to was a vote that the Parks Advisory Board took, and council did see this in the CIP for central city land acquisition for park space in the central city in the more densely populated areas, and that was moved up from 2025 to 2023 in priority, and it is, this is one in the same.
Okay. So, but it's a specific property?
Not a specific property, but for land acquisition in the central city.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
But, but for lack of a second, so we'll move on, or we'll move back to, I should say, the original resolution, twenty-two four seventy-seven, approving the capital improvements plan and financing for the 2023 capital improvement projects.
Aren't we on the ARPA?
We're on ARPA.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Twenty-four, twenty-two four seventy-eight, appropriate ARPA funds for 2023 specific infrastructure projects.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, we're at twenty-two four seventy-nine, approved cooperative purchase of fiber installation services from Cablecom LLC for connecting Sawyer Creek Buildings, Pollock Community Water Park, and Leach Amphitheater, two hundred and four thousand, four hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on twenty-two four seventy-nine. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, twenty-two four eighty is to approve commitment to Winnebago County for fiber installation costs, sharing project to extend service to connect Station Nineteen Oshkosh Fire Department, two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor.
Just briefly, I just want to thank you. This is cooperation right here. If, if not for a project going on within the county already, not using county resources, we wouldn't be able to, to extend this. And this is about us partnering with them and, and getting some benefit from a project already underway, and, and that's a great thing, and, and I'd like to see more of it. So just a thank you for, for the ability to, to jump on board with that project.
All right, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, resolution twenty-two four eighty-one, award bid for public works contract number twenty-three oh one to Advance Construction, Inc., for Wisconsin Street Reconstruction, two million, eight hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars and forty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on Wisconsin Street Reconstruction. I think many folks are going to be quite happy to see this street reconstructed. All right, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
And the final resolution this evening is twenty-two four eighty-two, award bid for public works contract number twenty-three oh nine to Vinton Construction Company, Inc., for Bradley Street Asphalt and Utility Construction, one million, nine hundred forty thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars and thirteen cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, we're now at council discussion, direction to City Manager, and future agenda items. Are there requests for future agenda items from council members?
Excuse me, Deputy Mayor?
I was just going to do it in our future meetings.
Oh, pardon?
I guess it's either under agenda or meetings. Just a reminder, closed session after our next regularly scheduled council meeting, Tuesday, the, help me out on that.
Twenty-second.
There we go, Tuesday, the 22nd. After our council meeting concludes, we'll go into closed session pursuant to the performance evaluation of the city manager. You'll be receiving information from me in the next few days regarding that.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thank you. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that the DORA pilot has ended for the year. Do we have a plan to have a presentation on the outcome of that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I think what we're going to be doing, I had a meeting last week with the representatives from the bid, and, you know, I'll be bringing forth their request to continue the DORA. I put something in the newsletter, pretty much reflects what was in the newsletter, and I wanted to get it out, so I gave you a heads up. So thanks for bringing it up. The intent would be for it to be either on the 22nd or in December. I think the deputy mayor would like to keep the agenda light for my review, so would I. But before the end of the year, I think they were hoping that the council could give them some direction on what they can do for the following year.
Did they plan on, like, coming to present to us, or?
I think they were expecting to come when the request came forward.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Miller.
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, you got a second? I didn't warn you, I was going to call you up here and talk about DORA. So, oh, please, chief, sorry. Too many chiefs. Sorry to throw you under the bus. I normally would like to tell staff I'm going to invite them up to talk. But can you give us a synopsis and your feeling of how the pilot went?
There were no issues, significant issues that came from the DORA program. The, a lot of information sessions that were provided to citizens that were partaking of DORA and confined within the area that it was designated seemed to be working okay.
Thank you.
So back to Councilmember Wojciechowski's question, whether or not we'll be having a presentation, sorry, city manager.
Yeah, I know that Jessica Mydell with the bid would be more than happy to do that. I had a discussion that they would certainly be here when the council takes it up. So presentation would certainly be in order. I think they'll talk about the different things they want to do next year and why they want to do it, and that was some of the things I put in the newsletter. So I'll make sure it gets added to the agenda.
Yeah, and if they could, because I know one of the things that council members requested was having that data, you know, did it actually have an improvement, you know, in, to the businesses, to the area. So any other additional information is always helpful.
All right. And then I see that we also had in our package from city attorney, a review of the city's Bureau of Garden ordinance and processes. So is this for a future meeting or just for general information? Because that seems to coincide with some of the, maybe overlap with DORA, literally and figuratively?
Yeah, it goes well beyond that. And we, staff believes that we need to have council, we have some specific recommendations and want to get council's approval on those things. So our intention is to bring it forward. I wanted to get it to you. I gave you a little hint in the newsletter. Ms. Lawrence has worked with multiple members of staff, probably, you know, half dozen departments to make these recommendations. So this is just a little preview of what we'll be bringing forth. Probably, weren't we talking about, like, January or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is, but we wanted to give you a...
Well before season.
Yes, well set, well before season.
All right. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Have we shared this with the tavern league and gotten any, so they know what's coming?
No, we're just getting it tonight.
Okay, perfect.
And the reason we want to wait until January is to go, take time for people to take a look at it.
I understand, but I just want to make sure that they get this document, and they get a fair say in it as well. Thank you.
And neighborhoods surrounding the areas, I mean, the tavern league, obviously stakeholder, but neighbors in the residential areas, I think it speaks to that in the memo. So appreciate that. All right. And future workshops, do we have any future workshops?
No, but you're getting close to adding workshops at these discussions, so thank you.
Councilmember Ford, graffiti ordinance, clarifications of standards for abatements. I believe council was provided a copy of the ordinance via email.
Yeah, I don't know if I provided you, there was a request at the last meeting, Ms. Nyforth did a quick check, and we've had 80 graffiti requests of various nature this year so far. So it gives you an idea of the numbers that are out there. So, you know, about 10 to 12 a month we've been getting. So gives you a rough idea of what the volume is. So the real issue is, is do you want us to take a look at an ordinance? And I think that's why Councilmember Ford wants to...
Yeah, I mean, as I said last time, I would love to amend the ordinance so that we can have graffiti covered or removed and restored to a texture and a color that's consistent with the original surface, so that folks that are actually doing this, not the ones doing the graffiti, but the ones fixing it, have a guide to what they're supposed to be doing. So I guess what do you need to get direction to?
I think just, if there's a majority of council that's interested in that, then we'll work on an ordinance. And specifically, there's really just one section within that code. And there's pros and cons to that argument, but we can certainly do that analysis and present it. If there's a consensus of council that you'd like at least to talk about it, we'll do that. Mr. Ford mentioned it the last meeting, he brought it up, and he gave me the courtesy of a heads up. But this is where we specifically say, do you want us to work on it? Because whenever you change an ordinance, it takes some legal analysis by the city attorney, and we want to make sure that we're just not, we want to take a look at all the aspects to it.
My personal opinion is, yes, we probably need to do something. I agree with Mike. We just don't want to make it too burdensome on the individual that suffered the pain of the graffiti itself and...
Totally, totally agree with you. To be clear, I mean, right now, they could just put up a giant wood plank over it.
Right, I agree.
The law.
I absolutely agree. Maybe, Lynn, you're certainly the expert, but if it's a huge thing, maybe city assistance could be used if it's burdensome on the property owner or something to meet the standards. Just some flexibility, that's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, I think the city attorney would say, that's kind of a policy issue, budget issue. So she'll look at me with that statement, like she is right now. But that's, but she'll drop whatever, what we'll do is we'll do a little bit of a policy analysis and give you an idea.
See if they actually support it. I've only heard two here.
Yeah, no. But I just, I just don't want the 90-year-old lady to have to, if her house gets painted and she doesn't have the money and the city can make it appropriate for the rest of the neighborhood, that's where I'm going, so.
Well, and it's an interesting question, too, because as we've seen, like, through the mini mural project, the ability to apply different materials that, you know, I mean, in the case of the mini mural project, it's been, you know, specific works of art. But some of these technologies and printing capabilities and materials might even be able to match up to an original or a reproduction of the original surface. So it would be, I think, worth discussing.
Well, that's about public art. I'm not sure that that's what...
No, I'm just saying that what they...
This is not the public art ordinance.
Right, I understand that. I was using that as an example, that in some cases, there have been applications of public art through printing technologies that could or could not match up to the original surface. So that was just an example. I'm not articulating that well. I'll wait till we have the conversation. Mr. Ford?
Okay, I got, I hit the magic number, so I'll start working on it and talk to staff about it. Thank you.
Okay, and I requested just discussion on this. This is a review, request for review of some of the boards and commissions, and perhaps not a full update review, but more of a targeted, for the purposes of, if you looked at the 2017 board and commission report, which was more substantive, and specifically, there have been a number of items that have brought up about staff availability, limitations to staff time on some of our boards and commissions, the restrictions and limitations on Oshkosh Media Services, and also some of our quorum and some of our, I guess, overlapping topics. So I wanted to know whether or not council would like to ask staff to update that report. More specifically, we've seen some challenges with rental housing advisory board, with even being able to expend, I think it's $25,000 in the budget, on some of those inspections, as well as an imbalance on the makeup of that board. And there have been some discussions in the past, too, about whether or not transit traffic, bike, and pet. So just wanting to hear from council members about the interest in maximizing staff time both on those boards and supporting those boards, as well as the other resources and the productivity of some of the boards and commissions.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. If we're talking about basically a review and with the potential that there could be elimination of boards, I think that's absolutely with something that should be considered at this time. There are, as you kind of mentioned, a few names of a few boards that, at this time, their useful purpose is... No longer there. Isn't, either no longer there or isn't well-defined any longer. And so it may be appropriate that those reviews are done. Given the makeup, those are things that you present and we approve. So the makeup is the makeup, but there is a few that may be underperforming in regards to what their intention was. That come to my own personal line, but I'm only one of seven, so.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thanks. I'd be supportive of looking at, I think there was a recommendation to form a subcommittee. I think that might be a helpful way to do that.
Thanks for that reminder.
I was going to buzz in, so thank you.
Got it. Yeah, and as a liaison for one of those boards where kind of the original intent has changed over the years, or has, the function has changed, I think that would be helpful to relook at that.
And towards that end, Madam Mayor, if the council was inclined to do a committee, I think there's some value to that because there are so many different policy considerations there. And I would suggest, we've had some council subcommittees, ad hoc subcommittees, two, no more than three members. They're publicly noticed, but, you know, they typically involve coming to the meeting room, we notice it, and, you know, somebody may show up, typically not. But I would suggest to meet with departments to discuss some of their concerns, as the mayor pointed out, and then some of the policy issues. But most of it's going to end up coming down to policy issues, and, you know, you're the ones that ultimately make the decision. I think there might be value. Now I'm kind of putting you on the spot to offer yourselves up. You know, typically, what we've done is a very brief, without going to an ordinance, just create an ad hoc committee and just, you know, bring it to council, real brief, you okay it, and then somebody is voluntold to be on that committee. And, you know, that's, again, that's going to be up to you as well.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Question mark, and maybe someone in council can answer this. Out of all the committees we have, how many committees have non-voting council liaisons?
The only two, or excuse me, the only one is DEI. That was an item that was in the 2017 report, and one of the options was to make them all.
Yep, I did see that.
And so that was, that was one of the reasons. So that's probably one of those things you want to revisit, because there's pros and cons to the, there was a scenario that the mayor pointed out, well, it would have been better if the council liaison had been a member. Yeah, but there's other scenarios where it would have been detrimental to, so it...
boils down to attendance.
Most of the time, I really think this comes down to what the council wants to do. So that's why I'm thinking a policy committee to debate those issues and say, hey, council, as a council committee, here's what we're thinking for all seven of us to consider.
And I only bring that up because I think it's something worth looking at, whether we do look at the recommendation that was originally made in the report or making it so it's fair across the board and all committees have a voting member. Just something.
So are you asking whether or not there are volunteers for a subcommittee?
I think the appropriate thing to do would be to come back with a draft charge of the subcommittee so that it's clear what the subcommittee would do. And then you can do, at that time, you can, you know, maybe somebody is interested, they'll think about it after they see the charge, hey, that might be something I'm interested in. You might get a couple volunteers as opposed to voluntold. So I'll leave that up to you, but we'll get you a draft for you to consider. We've had a couple council subcommittees over the years, and I think we'll just, you know, add the appropriate things here. But then it gives the committee scope, what they're supposed to be looking at. The item that Councilmember Wojciechowski mentioned, those are things that you should be looking at, and it's appropriate. So we'll draft something for your consideration at an upcoming meeting. It'll probably just be a resolution, and we'll do it that way.
Okay. Thank you.
This is just a question about this. Does council have the ability to change the size of the boards, or is that, is that set by us?
That would be the implementation side of whatever recommendations come up. And we did exactly that with landmarks. That got changed because we were meshing together two committees. So we had to, we actually increased the number of members because we had some members from the Grand Opera House Advisory Board, and it was like, how do you, how do you merge the two without adding a little bit more to the base? So we went from seven to nine.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
And that was done by ordinance.
And over time, you know, there have been different boards that have, like, evolved or been restructured. I think the Environment and Energy Board became SAB, and the scope was changed, and there have been others that have merged, and, you know, some communities, you know, put their transit, traffic, bike, all into a transportation committee. I'm not saying that's the way we should, but those discussions will be greatly, I think, valued by those who serve on the boards and committees who, you know, get a little frustrated at times of doing things the same way over and over again. So I appreciate that. All right, we are at, speaking of, council member announcements and statements, report of council liaison for boards and commissions. Is there anyone who would like to share about their board or commission?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, not about my board or commission, but actually just a brief statement. A huge shout out and a big thanks to city clerk and her staff for the well-administered elections in the city of Oshkosh yesterday. Every year, you guys do an amazing job. A big thank you.
Well, I want to thank all of the staff of the city total, because every department contributed immensely. And I'm so grateful individually and as departments. They have supported us amazingly, at the drop of a hat. So thank you all very, very much.
Good. No, thank you.
I just, can I just add to that? Just anecdotally, because I vote on campus, because I live near that ward, which is typically can be very busy and crazy there, but it was a very smooth process. There were a lot of workers there. So thank you to the volunteers also, but very well organized this year, so thank you.
And I appreciate the patience of the voters who experience some long lines, certainly. I'd just like to share about the East Central Wisconsin Regional Plan Commission meeting. I was at last week that we are getting ready to, speaking of transit, go into East Central, work with the city of Oshkosh, and I believe some consultants regarding our transportation development plan, and also, I think it's the TAP or the TIP, a transportation improvement program. We're getting quite a big bang for the buck with East Central and the assistance that they provide in that. So that's a big part of what we approved at the East Central Wisconsin quarterly meeting last week. And we are at city manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Deputy Mayor stole my thunder thanking Ms. Belkin and her staff, and all the students from the university that helped supplement. So great job, and I got to go out a little bit. Jesse sent me on a mission last night, so and it was, it was very much appreciated. I mean, there were some tired folks when I was delivering the last of the absentee ballots at about 7:30. But yeah, very much at about 7:30, but yeah, very much so, and really appreciate that. And I also wanted to bring up earlier, and I didn't mention it, the two contracts you awarded for the public works, you normally don't award these bids at this time of year. Usually, our staff is finishing up projects and then finishing the design to get them out the door in early January. James Robbie, our public works director and his staff, got these done because they knew that the DOT in this region was going to be bidding out some projects, and we got ours out the week before the DOT did, which made our bids much more competitive. So it's that type of thinking that our engineering staff does, probably saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars. I'm not exaggerating. So that's the type of work that I think should get pointed out publicly, so people realize the good work that they do. So I want to thank James for all that. With that said, we have a memo in your packet regarding Split Rock Studios for the multipurpose gallery for the museum. That's under budget, so we're happy about that. And then I have the list of outstanding issues. Happy to answer any questions about those as well.
All right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
No further discussion on outstanding issues. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.